Commissioners, your recording is on.
Robin, did I hear that the recording has started? Oh, I mean Jake. Okay, thank you both.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. This is Commissioner Reed. I am facilitating, helping run the meeting today in Commissioner Willie's absence. She'll be joining us as soon as she's able to online. Oh, she is there. Hi, Commissioner Willie. Thanks for joining us. Sorry, I didn't see you up there before. So, welcome to our work session. I'm going to turn it over to staff to kick us off. But a reminder for anybody who's listening live, this is for informational purposes only. We do not take public comment. But we do have a 5:30 regular business meeting and folks are welcome to join us for that and provide general public comment if they wish about anything discussed during the work session. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Transky.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good afternoon. We are excited this afternoon to continue to build on what we've been doing for about a year and a half now in the spirit of building a data-informed culture for our behavioral health system of care. This afternoon, we're going to take a look at and review the last year to, Jared, is it 15 months we're going to look at today? Yeah, the last 15 months, but we're very current on our data review and we're excited about that. We're going to look at 988 and the Douglas County Crisis Line data. We're going to look at the mobile response team data and then we'll turn to our friends from Harvard University's Kennedy School of Government, from the Government Performance Lab, to bring the commission up to date on that process that we have been engaged with since early, it's almost a year ago, strategic planning process to look at what we are doing with mobile response, with 988, and with alternatives to 911 emergency response. This is an interesting season to be doing this work. We have spent a lot of time bringing significant new components online. You've heard me say that again and again. And this is really a season where we start to ask ourselves, are we getting the most out of those new components? How can we integrate, collaborate, and optimize that response so that we really have that integrated behavioral health system of care that moves people, helps people to move from crisis and illness as a norm to recovery and prevention as a practice? So, I'm going to reintroduce you to Jared Otten, the Director of the Douglas County Crisis Line, and to Blair Hines, one of the two program managers for the Mobile Response Team. And they will take us through their data review.
Thank you, Bob. My name is Jared. I'm the Crisis Line Director at Headquarters.
I'm Blair Hines. I'm one of the Blair Hines.
I'm Blair Hines. I'm one of the program managers for the Mobile Response Team at Burt Nash.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to share about our projects that we've been working on. I know that we're going to cover this information really quickly and I'm glad that you've all had the chance to see it beforehand. A lot of the data, we're just going to breeze through. And I think we welcome questions, as we've stated in past presentations, so that we can take those questions back and kind of look at our data and see if there are answers. So, please feel free to interrupt us. So, here are the highlights. Through the Douglas County Crisis Line and Douglas County 988, Headquarters Kansas has answered 11,476 calls in 2023. So, we also, in addition to answering those calls, have been working with the folks reaching out, coordinating care to the providers, with providers, with caregivers and agencies. I think one thing that's important to note for context is that this is about 43% of Headquarters Kansas's total 2023 call volume. I'm going to go into kind of the, some of the more detailed information about lines of service here in a little bit. And then the other highlight is that the Burt Nash Mobile Response Team responded 409 times. I think there's that 409 to 413 times. I know I saw a report that had a little discrepancy, but it's incredible that folks have been able to be served in these ways. And additionally, there were about 219 referrals to Burt Nash for outpatient and crisis stabilization services offered through the TRC. And then finally, you know, we're going to hear more about the work being done on the 911 Alternative Grant Program. But it's been really positive and encouraging, I think, for all of us involved to see leadership and program staff partnered with first responder agencies and behavioral health agencies and really doing the hard work of building relationships and forming consensus around strategic decisions. So, the first part is to get a focus on the Douglas County Crisis Line and 988. This graphic is a detailed view and a way of looking at the flow of our crisis system and how a person linked to various services accessed through the Douglas County Crisis Line or 988 and how they navigate, how our call counselors navigate making decisions with callers involved. So, I just want to take a second and kind of collectively appreciate that this system is functioning, this system is working. And there's been so many people, you know, from leadership to program staff to the people delivering the services that have helped make this happen. And I think it's pretty incredible that it has been an inter-agency collaborative effort. So, and I think, you know, some of the people in the audience today can attest to the positive impact that these collaborations and the care coordination that's happened and how that has impacted people. I have a few anecdotes in the slides that hopefully we'll get a chance to look at together. It hasn't been without its challenges, though. I think that we can all attest to the growing pains of collaborative partnerships. And I just really appreciate, again, the willingness of everyone to come to the table to work on identifying solutions to these really complex and big problems. So, now to take a quick look at the data. So, this is 2023. This is our local line. So, the 785 number you see there, the Public Safety Line, which is a designated line for law enforcement and first responders, and then the Burt Nash Center Crisis Line, which Headquarters Kansas currently answers. And so, total calls, 9,450. This is local calls for the first quarter of, sorry, that's wrong, January, so January 24 to March 24. So, this is the first quarter. And a couple of things to note. Big increases in call volume when we compare the first quarter of 2023 with the first quarter of 2024. 52% increase in call volume for March 2023 to March 24. That is pretty significant. That's something that I think is worth, worth kind of pulling apart and understanding how, how and why people might be increasing their utilization. Really, at this point, we can only kind of make assumptions, but, and again, this is without, this is without taking into consideration 988 calls.
Jared, I do have a question along the way. This is Commissioner Reed. So, the 52% increase is representative of all three of those numbers that you detail up at the top of the slide, right? Sorry, I'm using my hands, which is not useful to many people.
Yes, that's correct. And we're just looking at the March 23 to 24 increase.
Do you, if you have those categories broken out, does it look like it's sort of the 52% is sort of average individually? Or you, have you noticed that it's one or two of those particular lines? Does that question make sense?
It does. The call volume on the Burt Nash Crisis Line and the Public Safety Line are relatively low compared to the local line. So, for example, the Burt Nash Crisis Line might have between 70 and 150 calls per month. So, you know, it makes up, I guess, yeah, I don't do good, quick mental math, but...
Me neither, but it sounds like it's fair to say it's mostly representative of that Burt Nash Crisis Line and the Public Safety Line, just because the nature of the local line is that there's a smaller number of calls in general by comparison? Did I track that right? Or did I hear you the opposite? I heard, okay, that's me mixing it up. I'm sorry.
So, the greatest of those three lines, the greatest volume is in the 785 local?
Thank you. Sorry that I heard it backwards.
No worries. Okay. So, jumping ahead, so now we're looking at 988 calls by Douglas County area code. So, this is data that we received from Vibrant, the administrator of the Lifeline. Yeah, calls are routed based on area code. So, there's obviously, it's only representative of people with local area codes. And you can see the breakdown of the average number of calls per month, so 135 calls per month, with the range being 100 to 198, and the total for the year being 2026. I'm going to jump through these quickly because I want to make sure there's time, but we've broken down call volume by a few different, a few different ways of looking at it, day of week, time of day. And now I want to transition to give Blair an opportunity to talk about the Mobile Response Team.
All right. So, what we can see is that in the first quarter of 2023, we had 49 referrals total. In the second quarter, we had 93 total. In the third quarter, we had 116. And in the fourth, we had 151 total. What we know in comparison to the first quarter of 2024 is that we've roughly tripled the amount of referrals that we've had during the first quarter compared to 2023. This sort of breaks that down further. Our number of self-referrals is continuing to grow. That's our majority of referrals now, followed by family and third-party referrals.
Blair, can I ask a question? Can you go back one slide? So, did you compare that to previous, I mean, are you seeing an increase in any of those columns quarter to quarter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they've been increasing quarter to quarter. And then it looked like quarter three and quarter four of 2023 were growing, but not quite as much from the prior quarters.
And is Commissioner Kelly, the same for each, I mean, was it, I'm not going to say equal, but proportional, the total number of self-referrals, family referrals, or third-party referrals? I'm really interested in that third-party referrals. Has that increased with each quarter or stayed stagnant?
It's actually decreased. The biggest growth has been in the number of self-referrals.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner Kelly. That was one of my questions, too. Can you elaborate just a little bit on some examples of what third-party referrals look like and what that, just a couple of different versions of that?
Yeah, so a third-party referrals, it could be a concerned community member who doesn't have an established relationship with the person they're calling about. It could be a city worker. Law enforcement, could be emergency services. There are people who don't have, like, a chosen or established relationship with the person of concern.
That last part helps me because I'm thinking, like, what category would another service provider fall into? For example, a caseworker, an advocate?
Third party.
Third party. Okay, thanks.
This is just a breakdown of our referrals by zip code. Pretty self-explanatory. Highest number comes from 66046. 14% from 66049. And we have some unknown, about 13 from other unknown areas.
This is Commissioner Willie. Can I jump in and ask a question about that slide?
Yes.
So, what about some of the zip codes that fall within Douglas County but are not represented here? So, Overbrook or Berryton would have residents within Douglas County. Are those also captured?
I think it would be captured. The reason why those zip codes aren't included in this graphic is unknown. So, I think we likely don't have individuals served in those areas, but I think we can do our due diligence and go back and make sure that we're not leaving data off.
Yeah, I'd love to see LaCompton captured. We have a few people from Wellsville that are Douglas County residents that have a Wellsville zip code. So, just filling in those gaps so that we understand how the totality of Douglas County is being served.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. So, this shows our monthly growth rate. Looks like the most growth happened in December. Overall, kind of had our most growth in December for sure.
And of note is that December, the growth rate is largely attributed to a single individual needing increased services. And today, we don't have the growth rates calculated for comparing last quarter, or 2023 quarter one to 2024. But I think, looking at some of the data, yeah, we could provide those growth rates.
This is Commissioner Willie. On that last slide, hop back just a second. You said that December was largely due to one individual. What, what number of referrals are corresponding to that single individual?
I think it was about 53, if I'm remembering that number correct.
53 did not...
Oh, no, sorry. That's, 53 were the same individual.
So...
Thank you.
Maybe just something to think about for future reports and updates is unique versus total might be helpful for us.
Gotcha. We've been able to see that our peak referral hour is in the evenings, usually between eight and nine o'clock. That's held pretty standard for us.
So, this gives you a sense of MRT referrals based on the line that was used to access the referral. So, it gives us a breakdown. 31% called the local line, 27% called 988, 13 were through the Public Safety Line, 9% through the Burt Nash Line. That 19%, so those are individuals who are reaching out for public safety referrals, but not through the designated public safety line. So, it just gives us information on how people are, first responders are choosing to access the services. So, helps us understand what messaging we might need to put out there.
Jared, can I ask a question about that?
Yep.
So, in terms of public safety, using one line or the other, do you see a difference between our professional first responders and our volunteer first responders? And how do they know how to contact, contact 988? Do they know they have a public safety line? Are they using it at all? Are you tracking that?
I can't say that we're tracking it today. We could probably find that information by looking closer at our data. Most of the public safety referrals are from law enforcement, specifically Lawrence Police Department. Our efforts to educate folks have been in the form of attending shift briefings with Lawrence Douglas County Fire Med and the various police departments. So, I think one thing that remains true is that greater public education and consistent and ongoing public education is effective and necessary. So, and I would say, whatever we can do in that regard, we just got to keep doing.
I'd love to see outreach through, like, the Douglas County Chiefs Association. I think we have pretty good attendance from fire chiefs all across our volunteer organizations that show up to those meetings. It would get you into medical first responders in the county also.
All right, thank you.
Jared, I have one more question while this slide's up. Can you just, I guess, confirm my, how many of these are new lines? Like, the Public Safety Line is new in addition to 988, correct?
Yep. We established the Public Safety Lines separate from 988. So, yes, it is new. And we launched it in May of '23.
Okay, thank you for that timeline. So, those two have been developed in just recent years. Burt Nash Crisis Line has been in existence for a good amount of time. I don't expect you to know that, but it has been sort of longstanding. The local headquarters number has been longstanding. Am I missing one? Nope. I guess that's it. Okay. I just wanted to get a sense of that.
Yeah, and we began answering the Burt Nash Crisis Line, I think, in April of '23. This is an anecdote from a Lawrence Public Library staff member. So, it was an example of a success story where a person was able to get the response that they felt they needed. It was awesome to receive that feedback, to share with our team. And, and I think in the, it's great, it's great to know that things, when things work and that they, that they worked well for someone who needed care. The last part, we're going to quickly go through the 911 call diversion program as a refresher. So, we launched this program, I'm going to jump through this. We launched this program in May of '23. We did some collaborative work with Emergency Communications and we trained staff, educated them about 988, developed a protocol together so that we could increase the number of mental health crisis calls being transferred to 988, to Headquarters, with the hopes of reducing the likelihood of them needing an emergency contact, an emergency first responder contact. And so, that program has been going for about a year now. We've identified, you know, in close work with Emergency Communications and also in our work in the Harvard GPL Strategic Group, some of the challenges. And that program is undergoing evaluation and, and I think 2.0, if you will, will come out as we revise protocols and kind of learn more as we go. Of the 911 transfers, four have resulted in referrals to the Mobile Response Team. I skipped over something I think I wanted to highlight early in the presentation. See if I can find it. Nope, I lost it. Okay. Yeah, sorry, I got off track. So, that's kind of the overview of the 911 diversion program. Were there any other questions that Commissioners had or...
Bob, am I correct that we have some guests online that are providing some presentation about the GPL? Or would that be you?
No, this, we have a guest online from the Harvard team to walk us through the data on that. I was hoping maybe we could stay focused if there are any other questions on the data for 988 and MRT.
Okay.
One thing that I noticed as I look at this presentation and I look at the quarterly reports, which you've also gotten, right, is that in 2023, there were roughly 400 dispatches in the first quarter of 2024, 122 dispatches. So, I think, you know, one of the, you can make quick judgments and conclusions about simple numbers, and we have been asking some deeper questions to fill out the answer to those questions with a more sophisticated understanding of the data. But I think the group probably, I don't want to speak for the group, but an impression we've had is that there's probably more capacity for the mobile team to engage and connect more than it has, depending on how it's dispatched. And so, that's really what, so we'll stop there, but are there other questions about this data?
Thank you, Bob. Thanks for keeping us on track. I think I made an assumption that we were going to get all presentation first and then circle back, but I appreciate that request to sort of stay focused here.
Well, and I would encourage dialogue and conversation. We keep trying to, you know, make sure we find the sweet spot of engagement and making sure all of your questions are answered in these types of presentations.
I do remember a point I wanted to emphasize. So, we had 409 referrals to Mobile Response and we answered 11,476 calls. We've all seen that, that graphic that kind of shows the model that, you know, 80% of calls will be resolved over the phone and so on and so forth, right? So, looking at that, that data point there, about 3.5% of referrals, of calls resulted in a referral to the Mobile Response Team. So, kind of using that model and then comparing what's happening in our community, you know, calls are resulting in other types of referrals, like outpatient or community service referrals. So, it's not captured in that, but, you know, 3.5% are going to that higher level of care and the Mobile Response Team is, is coming in to provide that service.
Thank you, Jared. I appreciate you highlighting that. And it's almost like you read my mind because, and you did a great job explaining it because I was trying to formulate the question about, when we think back about that continuum of crisis here and how many folks are getting diverted from emergency services or just various points along the way. So, that's really helpful to hear. To Commissioner Kelly's point earlier, I think it would be really helpful in future years to understand not just the number of calls, but the unique individuals. And so, does that 3.5% sort of, one question is, will that stay sort of an average number? Will we see a lot of fluctuation in that year over year? And also, is, if we're only looking at that in terms of number of calls and calls that resulted in dispatch, I'm interested in zeroing in further and understanding how many individuals that represents across the county.
Now, one thought on that also, Commissioner Reed, and this doesn't just go for this dataset, is I think when we look at a number of things, the amount of time that people wait on a competency hold, the amount of time that people are spending in jail, the average length of stay in the jail, there are outliers. And so, in addition to sort of unique individuals, I think it's, in graphs and presentations like this, it might be helpful even to put, if there's an asterisk of one person made 53 calls in a month or a quarter, that's an important outlier. If somebody is on a competency hold for 24 months, that significantly impacts and can impact length of stay. So, I'm just curious about your thought if that would be helpful also as we work with our partners and ask for presentations like this, sort of understanding that...
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not showing data that is specific to one person. You know, I want to be really cautious about that. But I, I am interested in understanding, as we see the number of calls go up, and we've seen that over time, is that because we have the, someone who has accessed the system once in the first quarter, three times in the second quarter, nine times in the first quarter, right? Because I think that is another indicator that tells us, are we being effective in this system, right? Or, and I understand that that, that comment is loaded with all kinds of questions about effectiveness, but I'm, if I can switch us from sort of talking about like how we can better report the data, because that's really interesting to me. But, and to ask Jared and Blair, maybe to talk about some overarching things that you're seeing and that you're curious about, or wonderings that you have, having worked with this system for a year or a little more than a year, what are the things that you think would be more helpful in looking at the data or even think, stories that you want to tell us that aren't in the data?
Yeah, one of the things that we started doing in 2024 is like a 24-hour and a 14-day follow-up with callers. We've also implemented Likert scaling around different questions that might be, you know, did they feel like we were supportive of them? Did they feel like they were able to safely move forward after an intervention with us? What we have found thus far in our follow-up attempts is that we've, we're not getting quite the response that we would initially have hoped for. It's difficult to really discern a lot because of the low numbers that we have right now. But we are only in the first quarter, so given the trends of the rest of the data, I do feel like... given the trends of the rest of the data, I do feel like we'll have more information to kind of pull from those numbers.
I think I would just echo what Blair stated that this only gives us part of the picture. And I think hearing people's stories and aggregating that would be really helpful in making sure that we're delivering services that are consistent with people's needs.
Think another thing to keep in mind also, I think, shared learning going on here is to Commissioner Kelly, to your point, a person reusing services is not a bad thing. A person going back to the emergency room is not optimal. A person going back to jail is not is something that we're trying to change. So if a person returns to TRC because they have trust and because they built relationship and because that is a place that is solving their immediate problems in a moment of urgent need, then that's that's working. That's working well. And the same is true if people are turning to the crisis line to have a conversation with the folks on that line and that avoid that gets to the point where they don't call nine one one. It's a good thing if they're calling four or five times while they're in a in a season of urgent need.
I I agree with that, Bob. And and so that begs a question. Is there another metric that we can see that shows the effectiveness of our investment in this work, right? So if we just have people who are repeatedly using the service, is there a measure that we have that says it was effective? Maybe, maybe not, you know, is that do we need to look at this alongside emergency room? You mentioned emergency room visits, you know, is there something that we can correlate that effectiveness? And I don't know that we have that, but that may be something to think about in the future.
It is worth thinking about moving forward for sure and not always the nature of crisis work, but with behavioral health experiences and sometimes the chronicity of those experiences, like there will be ongoing recurrence. And I think us being available and being part of a system that can be responsive to that, anything that we can find within how we all work together that supports it, I think, is pretty fantastic.
This is Commissioner Willie. I like the conversation that I'm hearing because I had questions along those lines too. And and I don't know how you use the data to get it. What does success look like here? Like, how how do we know when we're moving people towards stability? Because the arc of that healing might be one or two points of contact, or it might be, you know, arc of six months or more. And so just wanting to always be looking into the data for are we moving people towards stability with the system that we have? And if not, why? The question I had about the number of referrals that are made to mobile response was how often do staff feel like mobile response would be the correct next step for a client? But it's declined because it because it costs or because people have to consent to that. So I'm just curious, like, how often do you feel it's needed versus how often it's actually used?
That is a very difficult question to answer.
I struggle to like, how would you know which service providers aren't calling? Like, it's that proving a negative is very difficult.
No, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, folks have called in and the call taker has suggested like, I think the mobile response team would be a positive step for you. And instead, that that service has declined. That's the metric I'm looking for. So it should be highly measurable. And I'm and I don't know if it is being measured, but it may be something that, you know, call takers have a sense of of what they're seeing with that.
And I I don't have numbers in front of me, but what I can offer is maybe sort of an answer to a small part of that question. We have had concerns from community members about costs associated with mobile response responses. And the perspective around that has continued to evolve for Burton Nash. I think we do recognize that it is a public service, that it should be available just like other public emergency services. We were aware that that did seem to be a barrier for some people from consenting to us, from considering us as an option. But that is one of the steps that we've taken to really kind of face that and help people understand that that is not a reason to not use us or consider us.
Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Willie, I think I can go back and identify the number of times that a caller declined mobile response referral. And then I think another, I just want to clarify another part of your question is, is it once the mobile response team goes out and then the number of times that a client declines the referral at that point of contact? Those would be the numbers you're interested?
I'm not sure. I guess I'm mostly interested in getting at if people decline the service, is it because of cost? Or is it because of some other reason?
Okay, that makes sense.
So let's see if we can turn and pivot a bit. And I think some I think this next conversation in a lot of ways also feeds into the previous conversation because what we're talking about here is a process of how do the partners that are involved in this work, Burton Nash, Headquarters, ECC, how do these partners iterate in ways that build on what we're learning from the the data in ways that, you know, better meet the needs of the people in the community who are reaching out, reaching out for help? So this is the process we started almost a year ago. And our friends from the Harvard Kennedy School Government Performance Lab have been leading us through a strategic planning process that I think is really now more focused on understanding the types of calls that might benefit from a more robust or a different alternative nine one one response. So Aloka, I'm gonna murder your name. I practice it all day. Narayanon, did I get it right?
Pretty close, Bob.
I don't know why a guy with a name like Tryansky would not be better at pronouncing. So tell us, I'm sorry. If you would.
Yes, my name is pronounced Aloka Narayanen.
Narayanen, good. So Aloka is going to lead us through an update on the GPL process and the and sort of the timeline, what we've learned so far, what we still need to know and what we're doing with this strategic planning process. Apologies, Aloka, for the worst introduction ever.
It's all good, Bob. Thank you so much. And thank you, Commissioners, for having us today. I know I haven't had the pleasure of speaking with you before, but you've heard from some of my colleagues in the past. My name again is Aloka Narayanen, and I'm a project leader at the Harvard Kennedy School Government Performance Lab. I've been with the lab for four years and over the last three years have helped build up our alternative nine one one emergency response portfolio. We worked with over thirty jurisdictions at this point and and we are lucky to have Lawrence Douglas County in our latest implementation cohort through which we're helping launch, iterate and expand alternative nine one one emergency responses in Lawrence Douglas County as well as fourteen other jurisdictions. So I'm going to share my screen so I can give you all a bit more of a visual of our work so far in Lawrence Douglas County. I'm going to try my best here to put this in presentation mode. Let me try this one more time. Okay. Thank you all for your patience. So first, I want to say that I very much enjoyed watching that beta review. I think it's really important that we're engaging with these questions about who is actually being served. What does it look like to get a more nuanced look at the data to understand differences in regions, differences in utilization? These are questions that we ask every day in our work at the Government Performance Lab. So so I want to I want to share that that our work with Lawrence Douglas County is part of a larger initiative around alternative nine one one emergency response. But but also to give you a quick reminder of the Government Performance Lab's work in general, I'm going to quickly walk us through some slides here. So the Government Performance Lab is a professional organization that is based out of the Harvard Kennedy School. We are consistently advancing implementation of new social service programs through hands on project support in primarily five policy areas, and these include homelessness and housing, children and families, criminal justice, economic mobility and procurement systems. And our technical assistance work is really focused on hands on support to increase the capacity of staff design tools that are that are helping to support desired system change, identifying metrics that can tell us whether or not reforms are working, scaling up promising programs such as alternative nine one one emergency response programs and connecting and sharing learnings across jurisdictions. Our criminal justice portfolio has a few different prongs within it, and you'll see this at the bottom left hand side of this slide. We test approaches in in both triage on the nine one one front, early diversion, bail reform and service navigation, to name a few. So on to our actual implementation cohort and our alternative nine one one emergency response initiative. Lawrence Douglas County is part of a peer cohort of fourteen other jurisdictions that are all in similar phases of either launching, iterating or expanding their alternative nine one one emergency response programs at this point. And these programs can look quite different across jurisdictions. But but just as a as a means of an example here, some of these jurisdictions are deploying mobile crisis response teams through nine eight eight, whereas others are deploying teams through nine one one or some other answering point that then diverts calls from nine one one or other other service lines or crisis lines. Over the past three and a half years, the GPL has been working with thirty plus jurisdictions on alternative nine one one emergency response. And we are constantly trying to pull together tools and resources to provide support for other jurisdictions that we newly work with from those learnings. And as a reminder here, our technical assistance for this work is philanthropically funded. So I want to share a little bit more about how our work has transpired so far. We began working with Lawrence Douglas County in June of twenty twenty three. And our initial collaboration involved discoping some technical assistance needs, what was actually needed here to improve or iterate on mobile crisis response of the unarmed variety from from the mobile crisis team. And initially, while we were sitting down and working with crisis system leaders, what we noticed was that folks really were enthusiastic about working together. And and it seemed like there was a really big, strong commitment, even compared to many of the other jurisdictions that we work with, for folks to to collaborate, to meet community needs. So in the early stages of our technical assistance, we identified the highest impact ways that we might support the deployment of the crisis response team. And in this case, the mobile crisis response team from Burton Nash focused on that at first. And what we realized through that process was that the place that required the most support was identifying where we could provide the most resources for communications officers at nine one one to be able to quickly sift through what the appropriate triage needs might be for sending a call to the right place. So so we realized that while the crisis system has expanded in a lot of ways and grown to meet community needs, we needed to play a little bit of catch up at nine one one to ensure that everyone was on the same page about what resources existed. So we started by creating a program reference guide, testing some ideas with communications officers at the Emergency Communications Center, thinking through exactly what additional information that they need and also how we could increase diversions to ninety eight or increase diversions to mobile crisis teams to ensure that the right response was always available at the right time. So around November twenty twenty three was the culmination of this first leg of work. And we also came up with some recommendations for next steps based on conversations about this work with the with the crisis system leaders that we were engaged with so far. And everyone kind of put their heads together and realized that what we really need is to make sure that we can plan together in some sort of work group framework to create the most efficient and coordinated system possible. So in December twenty twenty three, after engaging in this first phase of our work, crisis system leaders agreed to a GPL facilitated work group to plan a more efficient use of crisis system resources in the future. So the members that came together to be involved in this process include Douglas County Emergency Communications, Douglas County Behavioral Health, Lawrence Police, Lawrence Fire, Burton Nash Community Mental Health Center and Headquarters Kansas. And though these are the primary stakeholders who are involved in a work group on this matter, we are still in continued collaboration and communication with other crisis system partners. So we've had some ad hoc conversations with some folks who work on homelessness projects at the city of Lawrence. We've also been engaged with folks at the University of Kansas PD to ensure that whatever responses that they are also coming up with alongside of us are incorporated into our thought process on on a more comprehensive crisis system. So in January, we began a new focus essentially of facilitating a strategic planning process with these crisis system leaders. Again, I want to underscore how much the willingness and desire of these leaders to come together was impressive to us and also very important and crucial for the system to thrive. So our strategic planning process, though it's something that we have done in several other jurisdictions, was designed about around the specific needs of the Lawrence Douglas County context here. From January to June twenty twenty four, the GPL is supporting crisis system leaders in planning a system that is responsive to community needs in the county by assessing the types of calls that could potentially be diverted, identifying who the right personnel would be to take those calls and if they already exist or if there needs to be some planning for for new initiatives to be created, outlining the right dispatch procedures to ensure efficient use of resources as well as a maximization of sending the right response at the right time and then planning for the implementation of any of those recommended initiatives. And so this strategic planning process is specifically designed to make sure that there is strong cross agency collaboration that can continue to happen and that these decisions are consensus driven and evidence based. So we're using data in every leg of this from both other jurisdictions as well as data that comes from the Lawrence Douglas County crisis continuum itself. So this process began in January with a first component of aligning on values and guiding statements because we thought what was especially important here is to build shared language and shared rapport among all of the leaders who are involved in this process. And in June twenty twenty four, we anticipate that we will be ready to plan for some sort of implementation. It may be that the actual implementation happens after June twenty twenty four. But by then, we will have a good sense, we believe, of the types of responses that need to be incorporated within the system and ensure that everyone is coordinated to to be ready to to ultimately execute that together. We are currently in the middle phase of this process. We've taken a look at some data regarding nine one one calls and identified which potential calls could benefit from alternative responses other than existing first response resources. And we are now at a point where we're talking a little bit more about additional triage criteria that may need to exist at nine one one to ensure that these calls are triaged correctly and safely and appropriately. And our next step here is in identifying who the right personnel would be to respond to those calls. Some of those personnel already exist within your crisis system. So it may be that the mobile integrated health team within the fire department in Lawrence is well equipped to answer some of these calls. It may be that the mobile crisis team at Burton Nash is well equipped to answer some of these calls. But there may also be an additional set of calls based on the experience that folks have within your county and the city of Lawrence as well as jurisdictions that we've worked with elsewhere that may pop up as additional ideas for how to utilize resources. The last thing that I want to share here before we turn to questions, because I know we don't have a lot of time, is the guiding statements that the leaders came together to create. So I find this to be especially inspiring, which is partly why I'm showing you. So during the first leg of the process, when we were really trying to align on the principles and the values that undergird this work, we sat down with the crisis system leaders and we used some post-it note exercises in person in Lawrence and and came up with three guiding principles essentially that that and, and came up with three guiding principles essentially that, that allow this crisis system work group to come together in good faith, to make decisions together. The first is for this crisis system to be coordinated. Folks really, really outlined that the crisis system that is coordinated with clear frameworks would be built to, to, for success for, for community needs. And there's a recognition that this requires constant adaptation, but it's only effective when everyone is coordinated. Trust was the second component of this. Folks really emphasized that they wanted a system that is trusted, both within the crisis system leaders that you're working with, right? So trusting each other's organizations as well as ensuring that the community trusts the resources that exist. And then lastly, a client-centered crisis system. Last but not least, I should say, because this was a primary need that came up for the crisis system leaders, ensuring that humanity and safety of the clients, autonomy of the clients was the first thing to respect and to keep as a, as a primary focus of all of the strategic planning work that we engage in. So, so this is the first example of really amazing collaborative work that's happening with crisis, crisis system leaders. And we hope to continue, continue this process and be able to update you with more information about how everything is shaping up in the near term. I will pause here for questions. If folks don't have a chance to ask all of their questions now, please feel free to contact me or take a look at our website as well if you, if you have additional GPL-related questions.
This is Commissioner Willie, kind of a question, comment. I would just like to know and understand how our volunteer first responder organizations are intended to interact with this work, how they can be best used and, and, and so that they know what place or what role they're expected to play. If their role is to just be supportive and, and, and other jurisdictions are handling that, just so long as that they know and are empowered to speak up if they see it not happening. I just, I think they are a resource, and I don't think I've seen throughout here that we know quite how to use that resource.
Commissioner, that's a great question. And I will start by sharing that at this phase in the process, we are at the, let's look at some data, try to understand what types of calls exist and, and which calls could be safely kind of moved around in the system. So I think it would be, this is exactly the right moment to start thinking about which personnel we should be tapping to identify what the specific skill sets are and how we can best utilize that within this response system. So I'm going to make a note of that to make sure that we come back to that point in, in our upcoming conversations.
This is Commissioner Willie. Again, it probably shows I am a volunteer first responder in the county, so that's why I asked some of these questions.
No, it's a great question. Awesome.
One, one scenario that probably falls through the cracks, or I've seen it fall through the cracks, but I think that mobile response would be an excellent solution for, and that is during a, a call where responding to either suicidal ideation or suicidal harm, and someone then is transported for medical care or other care, but leaving family members in the home with no guidance over what just happened, how do we process that, what happens next? I, I wonder if that could be a place where mobile response could be helpful and effective.
Commissioner, that's great. I've seen many examples of that in other jurisdictions and would be happy to provide more information to the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Team on, on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Aloka. Do you mind stopping your screen share for us, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. I, we are a little bit limited on time, so one question that I had that just kind of came up again, and to tie back to earlier parts of our presentation were to, I heard, and I can't remember exactly who said it, maybe it was you, Jared. Actually, maybe it was you, Blair, but that there, there's some conversations going on and thought about how could MRT's capacity be sort of better utilized or more, utilized in a more expansive way? So I'm just curious if you can elaborate on some of that, like, maybe it would be best if you can illustrate for us an example of where there's maybe been some sort of barrier or inability in, for MRT in its current form to be able to respond to a situation that that otherwise you think might have been helpful, like, have there been identified barriers or constraints that don't allow you to respond? Or is it a matter of just staff capacity on the team?
I'm not sure it's either. I think it might be because we're not receiving, like, we're not getting that information. Because it is really important to us to be responsive, and that's, you know, really what drives what, what we do. I think we're aware there's no shortage of things that we could be assisting to and responding to. And we've had a number of instances over the last year and especially during, I would say, the last three months where we have had asks or needs being presented to us by various systems in the community, resources in the community, that have been more of like a specialized ask. Yeah, like a critical incident that we're responding to. And I think that's great. Like, I love that we can show up for that. We are looking into specific critical incidents trust management training for the team so that we can really be solidly equipped in evidence-based training to take on more of those responses.
Got it. Thanks. Yeah, that's really helpful. And I, I think my next sort of follow-up question was going to be about those critical incidents that was mentioned in the slide and what type of barriers do you see or, or opportunities for enhancing the team's ability to respond to those? So you just kind of answered that, and it sounds like some additional training and I would think, you know, some communication and coordination with our emergency management in Douglas County, for example, and some of the structures they have around that and what coordination and you know, just collaboration around some of those might look like in addition to just the specific emergency services departments that might be responding and that might call, calling you. So I think I heard you say before that it's not necessarily that there are barriers to responding, but there may be some more public awareness building and communication externally to different folks and different entities in the community about how and when they could reach out. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, and I think we're absolutely interested in providing and participating in more awareness of our ability to have those types of response to the community. This might be slightly biased, but I will say the feedback we've been getting when we've been responding to these critical incidents is that it's been well-coordinated, it's been easily communicated and that we've been able to respond quickly at, at times being ready to respond before a scene may even be cleared.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Just point out, because there were some attachments also from the Burt Nash Quarterly Report. In the most recent Quarterly Report, I think they illustrate some new things that the team has been experimenting with and responding to. I was struck in that report by, you know, off-hours and over the weekend, the team's doing some work in the Douglas County Jail, for example, so that, that is a, an unmet need that is, that is filled. So I just encourage taking a look. I know, I, I'm very grateful for the quarterly reporting that Burt Nash has been doing because we get both the data and also kind of some narrative highlights of how the team sees progress.
This is Commissioner Kelly. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Bob. And I'm excited to see how, I think it said, coming in 2024 on there, sort of that satisfaction survey for MRT and what that will look like. Tony and Chief Llewellyn are here, and since we were still talking about 911, I, I'm interested to hear from Tony or the chief. Sort of, it sounds like the process is really good. But I want to hear from you all, maybe what your concerns are, what your apprehensions are as we think about deploying 911 differently. Anytime we disrupt systems, there's going to be some anxiousness about it. There's a lot of good that was reported, but I want to make sure we also focus on what maybe some of the losses are that you're thinking about now if we did things differently.
Great question. This is Chief Llewellyn with Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical. We actually just met yesterday with Emergency Communications Center staff to discuss the way in which we evaluate and dispatch EMS responses. And, and the underlying system that sits beneath our, our current actual system i- is more robust and, and we've talked about different approaches to implementing that underlying system that will allow us to, to gather a better data, number one, on, on the specific types of calls we're going on to better categorize those calls and respond to them. And one of the things we've talked about consistently through this process with the GPL is is getting the right resources, the right person, the right time. This will allow us to, to implement that. Including the, the potential to, to down the road, maybe add a nurse line to, to even get some of those super-low acuity calls into an area that we haven't even talked about with the GPL yet yesterday. We're just brainstorming that yesterday. So these conversations are good. I think we're, we're talking about resource allocation and, and getting what's needed, where it's needed. And, and they continue to go on even outside of this process. So I think the, one of the side benefits of our work with GPL is it's, it's increased our trust in each other and, and ability to communicate with each other and, and even a brainstorm without worrying about carving out our little silos like you so often see in, in government and, you know, just, just tearing down those walls. So that's been a good process and it's evolved even, you know, as, as recently as yesterday with, with stuff we haven't even had a chance to talk about with, with the team members.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's a great question. Anytime you do something different, when you've done something the same way for so long, is, can be, can be challenging. I think that the, the nice thing about the system and the way that we're doing things is that it's, it's okay to say what's, what's whoa up and it's, think about this because we identified early in the process that different teams don't always speak the same language. And by being able, able to be comfortable enough to be able to stop the process, reconvene with the same language, now we can move forward. And I think that's evident with what we started in January. And, and I feel much more comfortable now because I think when we're having a conversation, we're actually speaking on, under the same terms. So the, some of my apprehensions before that was that I thought that at times we didn't know what each person was, was truly thinking. And now through the process, it's, it's, we're all together and we're going in the right direction. And now we can work under a solid base because that's where it's going to start and it's going to be able to flourish comparatively to, you know, if, if at the end of the day, no one's understanding the base, then it could fall down very, very quickly. But just the change in general, I think, is, is appropriate. And I, we see a lot, a lot of times in our world where we, we are sending resources that we know aren't the appropriate resource. And so this will give us the, the ability to send the right resource and get them the right help. And at the end of the day, that helps my staff and, and, and the community as, as a whole because it's going to reduce call volume. Because instead of continually calling all the time, where they're going to get the help that they need.
That's great. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Reed again. Commissioner Relay, do you have any further questions for any of our panelists or presenters?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you for asking.
Commissioner Kelly, anything else from you? Okay, I don't have anything else at this moment about this, but really appreciate the presentation and excited about the progress and what more we can learn as we think about some kind of different angles to look at this data and different anecdotes that help us understand better what, where some of those gaps might be and also some opportunities that are right in front of us that sounds like this team has really been working hard to identify. So thanks, everybody, for your time. With that, we are adjourned until our 5:30 business meeting.